So.
All right, we're gonna open up the meeting. This is the Monday, July 15th, 2024 Historic Preservation Board Regular Meeting for the Village of Pittsford, obviously. We have a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we have eight items on the agenda tonight. Does anyone on the board have reason to accuse themselves for any specific item?
I do not, no.
Nor do I. We have five members on the board. Jeff Pollak, we knew was gonna be absent. Chris Dobrowski might be able to make it. Hopefully, he's here by six. We like to have a full board, if not four. So let's continue with three. Everyone has a right to a full board for making motion on their application. So if you don't wanna move to a vote, if you don't think you're gonna get full majority or a quorum vote, we would just ask that we either wait till Chris arrives, or we can move it to the next month. And obviously, our apologies on that. It's something that no one likes to hear, but let's go forward with the three of us on the board tonight, and we'll kinda work through every application as we can. So we'll start with 67 South Main Street shutters, and I believe Steve's gonna help out with that one.
Yep. The Marshalls have presented the holdouts for the shutters that they would like to use. They want our agreement to sit for them for the meeting.
Very good. So last month, we approved the shutters, so this is just strictly for the hook and eyelets that are proposed.
Yes, the board.
The hardware associated.
That's correct.
You've got the...
Yep.
The, I don't know what to call it, pintle.
It actually makes it safer for the whole house than the second story, trying to reach out and turning the vessel hard to utilize the shutters.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
These are operable from this side.
Well, it's pretty unusual that anyone actually closes their shutters in bad weather, but in case, just in case.
Maybe on a day like today. I have no questions.
I have no questions.
All right, I make a motion, we approve the, as it's stated on here.
I'll second.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so let's make, we just need to make findings.
I'll make a step. Would you like me to?
Sure.
Make a step. The shutters being presented are historically correct for the date of construction of the building, as is the hardware that's been proposed. The application complies with the Village Preservation Guidelines, and also, the shutters and their hardware are reversible and present no negative impact on the resource.
Thank you. Move on to the next one, 26 Bountinav, storm door and storm windows.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, we should put a chair up. Thanks, Chuck.
Could I, could I ask the code enforcement official a question before we begin? Are storm windows and storm doors included as required for review by residents? Okay.
Your question's going to... The reason I did it is you bring the hardwood storms that had different styles. You know what I mean?
Right. And it's important to be sure that any division is appropriately located. So I guess they should be.
May I print it off?
Sure.
Is the exact specs of, that's the door that we're gonna put on?
Thank you.
Delightfully transparent.
Yeah, that's...
Yes.
And you can see from the submission, from the pictures, the original front door is gorgeous, it's beautiful.
Yes, it is.
I wouldn't wanna hide it.
Yes.
I also have the person who's doing the, I don't know if you need to see the type of reproduction that they do for the wood.
For the storm windows?
Windows.
For the windows, nice.
Yeah, it's probably going to take him some time, but they're true reproduction windows, and I myself have taken every window out, restored every window, all hardware, all of the windows open and closed, and of course, maybe lots of air. So he's the storm window for...
My question was, it says, "We're gonna build the storm windows." So I was wondering if it was actually gonna be you guys or someone like us.
We're gonna have someone build, who's a business based on experience.
I'm gonna...
I need a picture too.
Unless I can hear this.
No, we should make a picture.
Well, this should be in the file.
Yeah, we should contact them.
We could certainly...
Okay, you can do that for your record.
Okay. This is important stuff.
Yeah. I didn't have many questions on this application. It's pretty straightforward, materials. Do we have to approve this as the door and then the storm windows? Or is this application presented as is?
I think it's one application for two things.
There was this, it was kind of, I don't know if you just entered this for, just for reference?
In the past, I've come to the board many times, in the past, they'd asked for two scale drawings if they wanted to be exclusive of all of the information.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that was great, and we'll just make note that that has...
Better than most additions.
The addition has nothing to do with what's proposed. Because when I saw it, I was like, oh, what about this?
Probably two years ago, we are still looking at getting true to the house shutters, the shutters that are not permanent, but right now, we have to give what the central is for.
You might be interested in contacting Mr. Marshall, because they are giving, they have new wood shutters going on?
Yeah, they have.
New custom-made shutters, if that's what you're working for?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
Okay, let me see who's... Yeah, I thought I saw the name of the contractor in the application, but I'm not finding it immediately. He's a trustee here, if you could call him, leave a message for him.
Okay.
Because they're getting wood, historically accurate shutters for the house.
And that's a...
Yeah.
The contractor name is Timberlane, Jordan Dentrum.
Oh, thank you.
Timberlane. You can take a picture right here. This is a public document. It's, or it'll be on the, on the...
Yeah, it's on the website.
It'll be on the website.
Jordan?
Yeah, J-O-R-D-A-N, and the second is, I'm gonna say French, small d apostrophe E-N-T-R-E-M-O-N-T.
Dentrum?
Dentrum. I don't know if they're Canadian enough.
Thank you, that is very much appreciated.
Right.
But you can see pictures of the shutters that they're having built and everything on the webpage.
I'd love to look at that, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve this application as presented.
A second.
Member Sarah? Member Torres? Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You want me to do findings again?
Sure, we'll do it together.
Well, you can do it.
So the proposed application is an improvement on the wooden storm windows, and the storm door has added protection on the historical front door with minimum damage to the visibility of the door.
Of the original historic door.
All proposed changes and additions. Our improvement to the property as well as meets the Village Design Guidelines.
Reversible and present no negative impact on the resource.
All right, 5 Sutherland Street?
Can I grab the...
Yeah. Oh, this too?
Yeah, thank you.
How you guys doing?
Okay, so thanks for seeing us again.
Of course.
Thanks for being seen again. Thanks for being seen again.
So we have a plan, we got the architect, we updated the plans. We think that we have most of the things that you guys would like to see, but we wanted to come by, make sure, and we can probably then just take it back and final, final. I mean, we've got things on here, if you guys are okay with it, but I don't know exactly what the comments might be, so we're kinda here.
Did we, this was information only, first time? Okay, that's... I couldn't remember if you guys had a proposed packet or anything.
Yeah, well, the first one was informational.
Okay.
We took that information, we got the architect to do the plans, and we have kinda presented the plans that we'd like to do here.
So this one's kind of in two parts, right? You have to approve the garage and then report that.
Well, it's one application, but we can certainly look at it separately, I believe. I'm sorry. I have glasses, but the bifocal part focuses on the dashboard, not on writing. Can you tell me what the vertical dimension is? Oh, thank you. No, I've got too much of a...
So that's the garage, I'll just maybe...
Let's just start with the garage.
Yeah, okay, that's where we are.
No, I'm concerned, I'm concerned, I continually have a concern until I don't have a concern any longer about the height of the garage compared to the height of the house, but I can't...
Oh, okay.
I need to see the dimension for the height of the house, because it is given.
It's a foot less than the house.
Yeah, this is 26. And the garage is 25,6. Okay, it's a little small. It's also set back, so receptive, perception, it won't look quite as high. Yeah, okay. I'm gonna set this down over here, if anybody else wants to look at it, or when anyone else wants to look at it. I don't wanna cover the microphone.
The only thing that I saw that stood out to me was the shutters. Those shutters wouldn't cover the windows. I don't think you need those shutters. On the garage, yeah, we're only talking about the garage for now, yeah. That was the only thing that really jumped out as like, we should probably ask you guys either change that, or if you did want shutters, you would separate the windows and then put shutters between so that they would close 50/50.
Okay.
Right? But on these windows, you really don't need those shutters.
Yeah, okay.
There are, there are design guidelines that the Village has that are viewable online, and that has a great explanation of shutters and how to size them appropriately.
Like on the shutters on the first floor, on what is titled the left side elevation of the garage? Those shutters are historically accurate in size. I'm not sure how they're gonna be mounted.
I'm not certain those are.
I don't think you need them on the garage, since they're not gonna, there's no, there's shutters on the garage here.
I don't, I don't believe those shutters are wide enough for this window. The height is correct.
Right.
But it appears, here's the middle, here's the middle, that looks this. I didn't bring a scale, so...
They might be too thick.
They're too narrow.
They're also actually advised not to take the shutters off our house.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so I think you probably took the front and just kicked it over the side, would be what I'd get.
Who suggested that you...
One of the architects that used to work on the board.
Well, it appears that...
You said that you were advised to take them off?
Not to.
The house doesn't really need the shutters on our actual house.
Yeah.
And they're not, like, they're just stuck on the shutters.
Yeah.
Did you say that you had been advised not to remove them?
To remove them.
To remove them, okay. On the house, the second story shutters don't look too bad, but on the first story, that's not the case.
But since they're there, we can't do much about them.
Well, if they wanna take them off, they can take them off.
If we can't take them off, though, it wouldn't impact?
No.
On the garage, I have two issues. On the left side and the right side elevations, there are paired windows with an appropriately-sized mullion between them. Do you know what the mullion is? It's the, well, if you turn around and look at the back windows, it's the divider between the three windows. It's not, it's here, because this is an older building, those mullions are structural, they're helping to support the beam that goes across the head of the windows. And the mullions, as shown, on the left and right side are appropriately sized. On the front and rear elevations, however, these appear to be what I, what's called factory mold. The two, the two windows are joined together in the factory, and they come to your house as a pair. And that, there is no mullion between them, and there should be. In my opinion, you need a mullion, which means two separate windows with a separate divider between that is the same dimension as the mullion on, proposed on the left and right sides.
This is the front, specifically talking about the front windows?
Front and back. Front and back, second floor of the garage.
So would you prefer to see two separate windows, or would you prefer one window?
It's gotta be two separate, which is...
Well, here, I'll show you if you want.
If you want two windows, then they need to be separated by somewhere between four and six inches. Six inches is, because you've got, you'll have two two-by-fours, or three two-by-fours perhaps, to make the distance, so it's either three or four and a half inches, and then there's finished wood on the side, so it ends up being between five and six inches thickness. But that's a structural...
And it sounds, you know, a bit more aesthetically, you know, fitting to have just one bigger door.
No, I, no, I, no.
That'd be too modern, probably.
Yes, that is too modern.
The way you have them on the right and left elevations is...
On the second floor.
On the second floor, looks, looks historically...
Yes, that's appropriate. I'm concerned about the metal roof on the overhangs. The main, the main roof is asphalt shingles, it looks like, but the overhangs are all modern... Modern metal. And, I, no, I know that, but it doesn't matter what it's, they don't make flat seam metal roofing. It's not, they're, the purpose of metal roofing is to be fast and inexpensive, and flat seam involves something totally different, needs to be soldered and all that stuff.
Do you have manufacturer of this metal roof, or do you know who's doing it?
Western states, Western lock.
Okay.
Well, it's similar. No, that's different company. Yeah, we called the person that did it up the road. We kinda just modeled it.
Up the road on...
Saw it running across from this wall.
Saw it across that wall.
Left side, I don't know the number.
Oh, okay.
Next to my team, next to me.
No, it's TS, it is TS. It's on the left, so what, you're going south, it's on the left side, they have some metal roofing over there, it's kinda looking modeled out there.
Yeah, the overstanding seam roofs are on their accessories on the house.
I was gonna say, for accessories, it's appropriate.
Same thing as one down on 87 South Main.
The green barn.
They have the same seam on that porch that goes to your accessory between the home and the garage.
Yep.
I don't agree that it's okay on an accessory building or portion of the building. There's a significant difference between historic sheet metal roofing and modern sheet metal roofing. And generally, those differences are due to the material that's used in the modern steel. Modern steel roofs are essentially your car with a kind of...
Which is why I brought someone that people already approved.
Yeah. And I think that we could have continued this conversation on the front of the house, on the actual porch, but in this, in this, I almost said barn, but in this garage, if it's been approved in the Village of the street, as well as South Main, what would be best is to have a product page on the material, rather than just Western States. But for a new build, and it's been done before in the Village, I thought it was appropriate. That's my opinion versus, well, not opinion, but that's my understanding versus Virginia's, which is totally fine.
And I can finally just touch with that, your bough section, did they give you 87 South Main, get you your contractor, who did their standing seam roof?
Thank you.
And I know we're just discussing garage, but that's been a two mimic, and I am the house with...
Yeah, it's the same that's gonna go on the porch on their house. So to me, they should be the same. Both under construction.
Not that it matters what color, what you're getting, it's black?
Dark brown.
It sounded as black, but based upon some feedback that came from some of the vendors, that black tends to heat up a little too much and work a little bit more.
Yeah. So Virginia, would you, would you propose asphalt shingles? Is that what you're getting at?
Actually, the colors of the garage and around the windows.
Okay.
Yes.
Propose an asphalt.
Unless, if they want a metal roof, then a traditional, I would have to refer to what type of metal roofing might have been available at the time this house was constructed, which I'm thinking, somewhere around the 60s.
You said 50, 55?
Yep, 55. Oh geez, I didn't know Denver made the pantry.
Do you may...
Most porches in the Village, except for ones that have newly had sheet metal approved, are the same roofing material as the house. And if they were not, if they were particularly old homes, it would have been probably turn metal, which is very lightweight, depending on the slope of the roof. If it was greater than about three, three-on-four, you know, do you understand that reference? Three-on-four? Three rise, sorry, three-on-12, three rise, 12 run. And that metal is very lightweight, seams are very narrow.
And that's why I wanted to...
And they're short, they're not more than about three-quarters of an inch high.
And that's why I wanted to keep it separate from the porch, because in my opinion, what I wrote was asphalt shingles on the roof of the porch of the home to match the home.
Yes.
But in this situation, while we're discussing the garage, I was under the assumption that that would still be, that would still be appropriate. So, if we wanna, before we take the conversation to the porch, do you have, what we will need is like doors and the light fixtures, siding material, obviously roofing is there, but...
I thought you put that on there, like the roof, the...
Like who, the manufacturer, the doors and the lighting and everything?
They're using a Louisiana Pacific Smart Sidelab Siding, that's a, that's a cement board siding.
It's actually a, it's a wood siding, engineered wood. It was used on the garage that was down the road on State Street.
Okay.
It was approved for that, so that's kinda what we used, we modeled after that.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking for is having like more material listed in the packet, and then the lights and the doors and the garage door. I mean, I know it says shy overlay carriage house, but I mean...
We'll get more, I guess, so probably the best thing to do would be to get your feedback tonight and table it for, like, and then take all the...
Especially if only having three.
Yeah, and then take all the feedback and then come back with final, final plans.
Yeah.
Everything on there, spreadsheets for all the materials that we like to use.
So I guess, can, you know, can we use that part, or like, I'm trying to wanna come back?
Yeah.
Knowing, yeah, knowing what you'll get through.
Yeah.
And then, you had a question on the...
Yeah, and then, so I was on the understanding, and I don't know, I don't have the guidelines in front of me, but I was on the understanding that's invisible from the road. Like, what are the requirements, like, from the sides of the house versus the things that are visible from the road? Do we have to use windows, or are there certain types we can use that have been approved before, that aren't necessarily for wood windows? That's kinda what I'd like to get back on.
Yeah, and the fact that it's a, that this is a new construction too, that comes into effect too.
Yeah.
So are you asking for like a product material, or...
Where I could find that, like, I mean, is that, is that online?
Of what to suggest?
Is front visible, visibility from the road, like what?
I would suggest I speak to Steve about that.
Especially when it comes to material makeup as well.
Okay.
On a new build. But what Virginia...
We have vinyls, we do it in our house.
Yeah, that are already there?
They were there.
Yeah. Where are they, on the rear or the back?
Rear. Rear, rear. So we'd like to, so I think that's probably what you probably do.
Yeah.
Give you guys a little bit more information to digest. I thought, I actually put everything on the plans, I thought she did, but maybe there's something missing.
I think she wrote it on there, but we're just looking for like specia...
Like specia, yeah.
Doors like this, and windows like this.
Especially the door handle fixtures too.
Handles as well on the doors?
If you have it, it'd be best to do that, yes.
Sure, okay.
Lighting fixtures.
Yeah, I think the lighting is on there, but it's not, she couldn't, we were trying to get it in for the holidays, she couldn't redesign the, it's supposed to be a bottleneck on the garage.
Oh, yeah.
She wrote it on there, but she didn't have the actual drawing, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Now I'm looking at the Louisiana Pacific website, at this lap siding that's called out.
The smart siding?
The lap siding that's called out, that's the horizontal siding, and I'm not finding...
Yeah, and we have the board in that one, actually.
So I'm not finding, I'm not finding the information that I'm looking for.
I can follow up with like an Excel spreadsheet I have, it's all healthy smart siding, I believe. And it's the vertical, the lap siding.
Yes, it's called out a smart siding, but I wanna know what it's made of. The other thing I did see, that it comes in either a smooth or a textured siding. The only time you see texture on wood siding or doors or anywhere else is when the wood is severely worn. So new, good wood that's, that's going up is painted or stained, and it's smooth. So in my opinion, you need to have smooth siding, not textured. It's a... Yeah, I wanna see a product information sheet on the siding, as well as more information on the, well, I'm not gonna vote for the metal, so it doesn't matter.
So in terms of the overall design though, from the street, we talked, last time in the informational meeting on the roof line, she created the lower roof line, the pitch of the house, and then kind of went back to some of the doors, the majority of the garage was going that type of thing. So, we said...
I think design, I don't have any issue with the design, with the exception of the two upper story windows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, for me, it's materials more than, more than design. You wanna look at the house?
Yeah, let's move to the porch. So one thing that I noticed on the left elevation is that you're adding a new door over there. Because I think, I think during the information only, that wasn't discussed just as in...
It was on the picture.
Oh, it was, on the left side? Oh, interesting, must've missed that.
That's where the door exists now, isn't it?
So it's an existing door, and I thought she put on the plan that we're gonna use existing door.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, we're gonna keep the existing door, it's a white door, it looks a little different than what you had on here, it's like eight, like... different than what you had on here, it's like eight lengths, I have a picture of it, but we'll have that updated on this one. But it's existing door, which is...
Is the location on the wall correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the same door in the same location, that's what I grabbed. Yeah, that's what I grabbed.
Yeah, she didn't quite get the, get it to match, so, did she put it on? I think she put it on.
That's a little bit.
Yeah, it's existing one.
The material on the, let's see, what do I want to call this?
Right side elevation?
Yeah, the right side elevation, the material of the new porch overhang, I would just call that out as well.
Okay.
That ought to, that needs to match existing. I'm not, I wouldn't go for Louisiana Pacific...
That's fine.
Whatever. I think that if it's on the house and it's connected to the house, is this right side elevation of the porches, it needs to match the existing, exactly.
In terms of the trim or you're talking?
The siding.
The siding.
The siding. The siding, like you don't want, you know, siding like this on the house and then twice as...
Or even, or even a different material.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think there's seers, materials to call out, material on the overhang, right?
Yeah, I'm not finding anything about this material.
Oh, I see, you told me about that.
Yes, that little wedge there has to match the house.
Sure.
I'm not finding anything about that material. I feel like the columns are maybe a little heavy. Anybody else feel that way about them?
Yeah.
Would you like to look at a large scale, larger scale?
Maybe.
They're...
I was hoping you...
They're 16 inches in diameter and they're...
We should probably pull out a book and get more information on the design.
Their call is tapered and the drawing doesn't show them tapered.
She may have forgotten to take that off, they originally were tapered.
Yeah, I just, I just think these look heavy. I think they could be 12 by 12 and be fine, I think.
Yeah.
Or maybe even 14 by 14.
Kind of a Craftsman style or something, it's a little bit...
Well, the other existing features of the house aren't that bulky and beefy. The brackets on the, on the roof overhang on the garage, I know it's the roof, but it's...
I mean, we're, if that's, if you're relying on the center...
Well, it's not necessarily our opinion, I would like, I think we should find out something that would be more historical to this time period.
Okay.
Well, it's 1955.
Yeah, no, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, it's not our opinion, it's more what fits right with the style or what's, yeah.
In the Village, yeah, okay. So how can we find that, is that a specific...
Yeah, I would just...
There is a book.
The book? Is there a book, we can, is there an online resource we can look in?
Yeah, and then is it in the front, do you want to get it?
What are you talking about?
That red book that you usually have.
Well, their red book is only architects, there are no, there are no images in it.
What was the book you had last time?
It was, it was another one of my, from my personal library, let me see what's out here.
It's in the library.
It is down there, it's historical.
Yeah.
And then, oh, Virginia, get back.
16, they're 16, we're looking at making it 12 by 12 versus 16. Whatever's the one that's in the story.
Steps up to porch are wood?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would suggest that you go to the library, there's a series of five, six, you have these books?
I think I do, I think that's what she was talking about.
Okay.
There's certain volumes though, right? There's, that's volume one?
Yes, they're one through six, they're chronological, but you should look in all of them, just go through the pictures that aren't people. They're loud, but look for...
What we're looking for is seeing is that it was built in the 50s, I mean, it's...
I'm, just see, just see what a more slender column might look like.
And on this, it actually says 12 by 12.
It's kind of big with it.
The other one...
Then this one says 16.
This one says 16.
And then this one's 12 right here.
She may, I think...
Right side elevation is 12.
All right, so we must have missed that when we went over it before the holiday.
That's right.
She took off tapered, she took tapered columns off and put straight ones, and she probably forgot.
Okay.
We'll get that fixed.
Actually, if you Google 1950s colonial house porch columns, and look at the images, you can see they are, 16 is a bit...
It sounds beefy, yeah.
It's kind of, I would think so, like arts and crafts, like, like really, you know?
Yeah.
Put 12 by 12.
entrances in porches.
Okay.
And these are just written comments on what's, what's appropriate and what's not, what's recommended and what's not, they're on it, well, here.
Okay, yeah.
So...
Each quarter?
Well, this is a, this is a different book.
Oh, that's a different book, okay, yeah, yeah.
This is, uh, the library's not going to hit this book, but you could come in here and look at it.
Okay.
This is a Village book.
That's great, just a plain...
But see how much, see how much lighter they are?
Yeah.
These look really bulky.
Yep.
The caps, capitals are big, the bases are big, they're very thick.
Yeah.
Can you see what I mean?
Yeah, so why don't we come back to the table on the columns? I prefer to have less bulky as well.
I'm sure she added it, you just missed it on this one.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so come, how are we doing?
Yeah.
A question for you, the stairs in the front you just mentioned.
Yep.
Wood or could we do brick, red brick?
I don't, I don't see red brick, I don't see why, that would be an issue.
Too much.
You have the brick on the, yeah.
What is the foundation?
Would have to be approved for whatever that's going to be, or can we kind of, we not want to figure...
If you want to...
No, we need, you want that approved.
If, if you do brick, I would make this comment. I think for longevity and wearability, having a continuous flat surface is preferable to having brick, is the surface that you put your foot on. So if you want a brick riser that you would see, and then stone or concrete on top of that, that would be better than having all brick. Anytime you have brick where the mortar joints, see the sky?
Yeah.
The mortar will not last in those joints, and it will be a continuous maintenance problem.
I have brick steps in my house and it's, it's a pain, and it's very expensive every time you gotta have somebody come and patch it.
Trying to get some of those walls, I just, three times. Okay, that's good feedback.
That's great.
Thank you.
I understand you're attractive, but...
This is kind of slightly different, but you know, we have this stoop on the side of that house, it's on our driveway. I was going to...
Was that cement?
It's concrete, right?
Concrete?
Exactly, so I wanted to brick over it or stone, like, do we have to get that approved too, whether the...
If you're going to do it, I would just add it in here.
Yeah.
Just add it on, if you're going to do it.
Yeah, okay.
If it changes the material.
And maybe part of the porch.
Yeah.
Do you want to put, do you like brick facing on the risers and then just, you know, do a, like just cement slab on top or something on top?
Yeah, or slate.
Slate.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that as well. Thank you for those ideas.
All right, so I think the last thing to talk about is the, is the metal roof on the porch addition. And that was one thing that stood out to me, like I mentioned earlier, and I know, we know where Virginia stands. If it's what you want, I would say try and do your best to find like a representation of a 1955 colonial revival home like this that has a porch on it that would...
Made in Village?
Well, not, not even, I mean, even, just, just in general, it doesn't have to be just in our Village. But just to show accuracy and just to show that...
Okay, we'll, we'll look around.
Yeah, because the porch roof should match the roof of the home, it really should.
You know, it's not visible from the street.
Oh, no, the porch would be visual.
Well, I'm saying that our main roof is just really...
Oh, the roof?
There wasn't really any other roofs tied into, I guess is what we're thinking.
Yeah. No, I get it, there's, there, you'll still be able to see your roof from the sidewalk.
Sure, yeah, the side is...
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, if it's, if it's what you guys are really looking for, I would just try and bring something in to support it, because from where we stand, it just has no historical accuracy towards adding a porch to a home like this.
Okay, we'll do it, thank you.
Yeah.
And then I guess you kind of need to think about, do you want to match the porch roof to the little overhang of the garage?
I think we have to, I think we probably do, it's on the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tied together.
Yeah. We're just going to see that in other times, give us a little look that we're going for, and take sort of that, something like this.
We'll come back, do some research on that. Okay, but other than that, the design, the other room is fine.
Yeah. And then, and then the one last thing that I would do, and if you, again, Jeff might say otherwise, but I would, in the packet for approval next month, have an image of the shed that's in the backyard, that's currently there, and just say, because it was in the fore information only, that once we approve all of this, then we'll have to make a motion to demolish that shed just by protocol.
So I'd take...
So just have that. I remember, it was in the fore informational, I remember that.
We can give it away.
Well, we were...
Somebody wants to take it.
Just by protocol.
Yeah, actually, the words are all nice enough, but not necessarily the page, so we don't necessarily have to demolish it, if we say we're going to remove it or give it to someone, it's the same thing.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, it's leaving the property.
Just it's going on the property.
It's considered demolition if it's leaving the property, whether it's whole or in parts.
It'd be great to recycle it if somebody wants to take it, it's much better than throwing it away.
But you still have to get it approved.
demolition application that has, it's leaving the property, but it's surviving, and this is where it's going to go. Okay, okay, we'll definitely do that, okay. All right. But that would be part of the garage plan, like it's on there, I think, right now, check it through, so, and then maybe just support it with some pictures.
That's it, yeah.
Do we need the person we're going to do to do the driveway? Is that standing?
Just what are you, what are you doing to the driveway?
Just asphalt?
No.
It's asphalt now?
What I'm pushing out.
It's asphalt, it's a stone, tempered stone.
I don't know if we've ever done anything to driveway.
I don't think we get involved in driveways.
Maybe ask Steve.
Okay, we'll talk to Steve, we'll look at it, okay. All right, is that everything then?
I don't have any more questions.
I think so.
Carol, ever, Virginia.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, then I'll make a motion to table this.
I'll second.
And if you could put it on, I can...
What's the next meeting, is it in Washington?
August 19th.
August 19th, yeah, we'll have a recording for you.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Sergeant Paxton.
August 19th, if that worked for you?
No, I haven't.
You sure?
Excuse me, I'm just...
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
If something came up, if you guys requested a special meeting after everything you guys have done for this project, our board would definitely consider it.
I appreciate that.
If, well, yeah, if that date really didn't work for you guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks for y'all. Remember your drawings if you want, oh yeah, that's true. Unless you guys need, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Abe Monroe and 19th North Main Street, Kublaan Roof.
Good evening.
You can both come up here.
East Government Affairs.
Paul, right?
Yes.
I don't have my glasses on, I can't tell. We should discuss Eastbrook.
It's 19th North Main.
It's not, it's not coming right now, at least it was last time I got it.
It's Abe Monroe slash 19th North Main.
Oh, okay.
Just because it's a...
Yeah.
Well, I don't think you rarely, my name's Jared Lusk, I'm on the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Hi, Jared.
How are you?
How's it going, Jared?
Good, Jenny Searle.
Yes, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to be here. I don't think very, it's very rare that you can have an application that you can look out the window and look at.
Yeah.
Maybe I should just say, just look, right there.
Yep.
As you can see from our package, that was the first part of our application was during a windstorm, I think, in about February or so, we had some photos, the roof, the existing metal roof, it started to separate from the cubo, and we, emergency repair, we quickly, it was leaking water into the, into the second floor of the carriage house, and so we had it repaired, so the, we could not get the existing metal, I think, what is it called? The ionized or something metal, so we...
It looks like turn metal to me, turn metal, which is coated.
Right, yes, and so we looked over here and saw the beautiful copper roof that's about 100 feet away, and so we decided that we would put that standing scene copper to match this roof and replace it, so we're here to comply with your code.
I have no objections to that beautiful copper roof.
Nor do I. It's beautiful. My only question has nothing to do with your application, but what do you guys use this building for?
Well, we can, right through those doors, the gray doors is a museum, it's stored in the museum, are a couple of old postcards that belong to the Village and...
Oh, neat.
A 1925 fire engine that the Village bought in 1925.
Awesome.
And so that stays in there, it's not there now, it's at the other fire station, because we take it, it's very hard to get that in and out of the barn on Sunday, and so we take that out for parade season, so we took it out for Memorial Day, the Lender Parade, and that's going to go to East Rochester on Saturday, and soon thereafter, it'll be back into the, back into the museum for another year.
Very nice.
So on the back side of it, there's a little room, sort of inside, I want to call it a living room or whatever, that we use for meetings, that ties into the patio to the, to the back side of it.
Thank you, it's good to know.
Anybody would like to take a walk through the museum, you know, we could do that after the meeting or another time, it's really, we're seeing, I know the historic...
I'd love to, but another time.
Yeah, historic.
You should make it an event with Historic Pittsburgh.
We did, we did miss it.
Okay.
Missed it.
Good idea, I have such a great idea.
The cherry brick, if anyone remembers, kind of ends up the circle side of the fire department, right, everyone through. Actually, the attendance was pretty good. Yeah, there was, there were probably about 15 people.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Same.
I'll make an, I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented.
I'll second that.
Excellent.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion Paxton.
Secondly, as you must have, you're impressed on the application, the fire district, which acquired the Bank of America property, and I'm sure that we've been pursuing for some time. The plan is, at this point, to just preserve the property, the parking lot and bank property, let me just back up, we're not in the, not in the business of acquiring the property at all, and we purchased the bank, we wanted a certain piece of property, and we wanted Well, in the purpose of the bank, we wanted a certain piece of property and we wanted to be able to access the the bank, use the bank property for access. This currently, before we owned it, although we had a letter agreement from the then Security Trust Bank in the 1960s that allowed us to use the bank, this entrance. We could get to our application. Uh, that was never formalized. And so when the bank closed, the fire district got very nervous because the preserving access to from North Main Street is essential to getting the firefighters into the fire station. They don't have to go through the four corners to get in.
Okay, so it's more for the firefighters, not the your equipment?
Right, our equipment, backsend from our.
That's what I just wanted to understand what you guys are saying.
It's for the firefighters to get in from the from the.
Coming from, yeah.
East, coming up State Street. If the red, the light is red, they can take the right arrow or pull in. And we've got North Main Street, they can they can pull in. Coming from the south, if they they can't, they don't catch the left arrow, they can go straight and cut in through that. So it's an essential essential access point for it, so that everybody has to turn right, left, to get through. Uh, and so we were very concerned. So about three or four years ago, um, we approached the bank and more formally when they closed, about acquiring the property or at least acquiring an easement to preserve that access. We, one of the issues with 19 North Main Street and getting that on the market is that we realized we did not have did not have access to the back of our fire station. And for some reason, they turned that into a chipotle, not trying to pick particular names. And they told us that we could no longer use it. 19 North Main Street would be our access, so we could never preserve it. So that's part of the issue here today is making, is trying to.
Well, you're saying 19, you're saying 19 North Main Street?
Yeah, so if they lost access to this, then they'd have to figure out some way to do something.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, okay.
Yeah.
My mind, I was still looking over here.
Yeah, so we could never really get rid of 19 North Main Street, the access on North Main Street, if we needed to use that to get to the fire station. So when we approached the bank, completed a facilities master plan that identified the need of a potential expansion of the firehouse and preservation of the access in their car. And they came after we approached them about acquiring just that, not the whole property. And they said, fund me that, we understand you want it, but if you want it, you take the whole thing. So now we now we own a couple, now we own a bank. Uh, and we're not in any position to, we never thought we owned bank buildings, we never, we certainly have a facilities master plan that talks about additional square. We don't know really what's going to happen. Uh, so Paul and his, and he's heading up that part of the process of hiring an architect to go through it. Now we have some square footage here. We have the firehouse, we have the whole parking lot, and we have the firehouse across the station too. We're in the process of evaluating what our space needs. We have a couple of buildings that could be potentially removed, for example, administrative and administrative space over there, maybe, maybe not. Does it make sense to do that rather than putting an addition on the firehouse? All of these things will be evaluated and they'll take some time. I would say a couple of years, our plans are only with our architect yet. All we know is we own a bank that we didn't expect at all. So obviously, sitting in the middle of that parking lot is an ATM. What does that look like? Right where it's one of those knock the thing down. Take up the take up the concrete sidewalk, patch in the pavement, re-stripe, and let the community use the parking lot like it is now. Uh, most of the businesses that are in Mr. Nukem's building and the town, etc., the firefighters use the parking lot to get to alarms. And when we have meetings in the firehouse at night, it works pretty well. So that's our only only plan here is to knock down the porch, go take up the elevated sidewalk and repair the patch, hopefully going to partner with the town.
Yeah, the goal is hopefully the town, the inner minister will even want the town to demolish it for us to access.
Well, I appreciate the background story because when a bank leaves and it has a bank infrastructure, and then to see that you guys are just going to take down the ATM without understanding the long-term plans of the property and who owned the property, I was, that was what I wanted to understand. Is someone going to come in and is the bank then going to say, no, I want to put up a new ATM, you know, drive-through? So understanding your guys' long-term kind of helps with this. And I know there's no real historical preservation of an ATM drive-through in the middle of our village. But I do appreciate your back, the backstory and the future plans of this property as a whole.
It has a pneumatic system. It's probably historic. Do you ever go there?
Well, actually, this one goes down and under, probably.
With the name left, they took it with themselves.
Oh, too bad.
You know, many people drive all through there all the time for the ATM.
Oh, I'm not surprised. All right, I will step forward and make a a motion to approve the demolition of the ATM as presented.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I guess I, I guess I guess I have one little question. On this drawing, there's a little piece right here that's in orange. I don't know what that means. Does it mean anything or is it just?
I know that Steve was in charge in 1970, right?
You're pardon? Yeah, 70?
Yeah, I wasn't orange, but.
Well, that's that's like the back porch to the.
Right.
The original building.
Since the since the banks owned the properties from since the 50s, and then just required the property presumably in the 60s. We put an addition on the building in 1970. I know the village is notorious for thorough review, but apparently on that day, somebody was drinking.
Yeah.
And the back stairs that go down to the stairs that go down to the to the stairs. Are half on the fire, what's now the fire district property and half on Mr. Nukem's.
Oh, good, oh, good.
So as part of our application, we were have sought a lot line adjustment to allow Mr. Nukem to own the entire stairway. So the fire district isn't responsible for falls down the stairs in the winter time.
You could cut a deal and they could clean your all your uniforms before parades and stuff.
But I could, no, it's more of a risk to us than than it's worth. So that that little colored shaded area that you you see is a piece of property that's going to go from the fire district to Mr. Nukem.
Okay.
Max the lot line.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Great.
Anything else for us?
Thank you very much for your time. Your time.
You too.
All right, we should do finding the facts on that before we move on. Finding the facts is that the structure, I mean, I don't even know if I want to say it, but is no longer needed to what the building is going to be used as. It provides no historical.
It's no historical value.
Value to the parking lot or to the building that the bank was previously in.
It's demolition. Does not place any negative impact on the historic Wiltsey Crump Building? Or the semi-historic bank building?
Yes. Okay, so we're moving on to 19 State Street, the signage. Nice to meet you too.
Steve, could you tell me what the sign ordinance says regarding multiple signs on a single building?
Yes, it states that there are two businesses in the building, and we both have a sign that is relative to the linear footage of the building. They each are their own separate entity and are allowed the linear footage of the furniture of the building.
The same, the same square footage as would be allowed for a single sign, both signs can be?
Yeah, that's where I read the code, yeah.
So I'll let me add into that because it is, it is, you know, they are both very large signs. The building itself is 26 feet, which means, and the sign itself is 21 square feet. So the sign alone would meet regulations which the Hartley Monroe sign does as well. Uh, so I dug into it more, and Jeff, maybe you could, do you have any comments to back up Steve? Or do you know this? Because I went and looked through it in, I believe it was 168-7, B as in boy, section two underscore section A. And I just wanted to have it read because Steve, in my opinion, is correct. But I think it'd be best to just understand this code because both signs are so large on such a relatively narrow building.
I agree, I'm afraid I was surprised at the code running there.
Yeah. I was too.
This is from 2004.
But they're much more, they're much smaller, appropriate size.
That's right.
Uh, 168-7, B as in boy, 2A is what I found that backed up what Steve was saying, but it was, it was a little confusing to read. So just let Jeff come.
I just have a question, there's already one sign on there, right? Or are we talking?
Yeah, that's the sign. This is just an additional sign because now there's two businesses in this building.
Right.
So my question for Steve today was what if there's a third business or a fourth business? The building is big, it's narrow, but it's big. Would we then have a billboard of signage on the front of it? All with equal rights to 26 linear feet?
Well, wouldn't be linear feet, be square feet, square feet for the sign. The size of the sign is proportional to those.
How wide is the building?
26 feet wide.
I don't read that this way, I don't read this that way. Says, all such signs should be located in a group. The square footage of which group shall not exceed one square foot per linear foot of building furniture, as said, all of them should not possess uses. So.
So it's the group of signs that can be.
So the two signs together cannot exceed 26 square feet.
So this is, this is where I, my misunderstanding was what Steve was saying, but I read it multiple different ways, so we need to have a ruling.
Well, he can use the rule, I just.
And of course.
The four square footage of each sign within a group shall not exceed one square foot per linear foot of building furniture. Right there, contradictory. Yes, it is contradictory, and the rule, the sign goes in the wrong.
Who wrote that code?
Not me. I read it that way. It said each sign can be equal to the linear footage of the furniture of the building. That's, and how do you, how do you now take somebody with a big sign, tell them, well, you have to remove that if somebody else moved in and you both have to cut your signs in half?
Yeah. Well, I understand that, it just seems like a real shortcoming. Aesthetically, though, you want to have it be roughly about the same size. You wouldn't want like one big one.
It is equal in the square footage to the to the existing sign.
Yeah.
It's just a different shape.
Both of both those, both those signs.
They are quite large. I mean, it's it's the reality of it, they are quite large. And in a perfect world, they would both come in together and have two signs that were similar in size, shape, everything, and then a smaller one.
Yeah.
That's not what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I have no objection to the design or anything, I'm just concerned about the size.
Yes.
So.
Which we think, we may not have any control over.
I think, I think Steve was right because the which is not not followed by any word. So it just says which, so what is which.
You put that in, Marty. For you, absolutely.
I'm sorry, there's no way they would have put the word each in there unless they meant each.
Can we make a, yeah, can we make a request to the trustees that they review this particular?
Yeah.
Part of the sign ordinance?
Four square footage of each sign.
For potential future revision, because this is a, this is a real shortcoming.
Within the group shall not exceed one square foot of linear footage of the building furniture. So each sign, Steve, absolutely correct.
Yeah.
And then a grouping, but you also made comment on the grouping of signs.
Yeah, but there's, in this case, I added a word.
Okay.
And that word's not in there, it says, all such signs shall be located in a group. The square, the square footage of which, the signs for the group. So then you got to go to the second sentence to realize, the only way this makes sense is if which, the first of the signs, not the group.
Yeah.
So you got to read the statute so that you're not reading part of it out.
Uh, what color? Which is the existing sign? The existing sign is the Hartley?
Yeah.
And what color is it now?
It's white and white.
It's white and white? And yours is going to be white as well? Yeah.
And his, they'll be white and black.
And every single word walked through the sign, is that accurate?
Yeah.
We use the same design for others, or we asked the business below us and got my contact, and he has a mind of the same division.
Yeah, I have no objection to the sign itself, it's the size and we seemingly have no control. All right, we'll give him that.
Well, I'm still just just confused on our path forward as a board.
Path forward as a board, you have to follow the ordinance.
Okay, and there's no questions in the ordinance as how they're written that we need to ask the trustees?
There's a question, but it's because the the code is not clear.
And if a third built, uh, business goes in there, then we'll add a third size sign that's also 21 square feet large?
Yeah.
And then a fourth business goes in, we'll have a fourth sign that's 21 square feet large?
Yep.
26 square.
No, the lineage of the building is.
My opinion stands unless challenged by the board.
Right. Did you say that one more time?
My opinion stands unless you under planning and zoning and having challenged my decision.
Use the code enforcement officer.
No, I don't, I don't, to me, it doesn't appear that there, we have any basis for challenging. But I think we do have basis to send a request to the trustees, who are the ones who who authorize changes to the code.
Yeah.
And ask them, show them this application, and ask them to consider clarifying or revising the code.
And would that make any difference in how we move forward on this right now?
No.
So then, moving forward on this right now, the only motion is to make an approval?
Well, no, there are other actions, but we can't object.
What I was about to say, unless there's, Virginia, let me finish. Unless anyone has issues with the sign itself. Okay? Then I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Member Sarah?
With extreme regret, yes. And it's not, don't take it personally. It's not, it's not your issue at all.
Member Torres? Chair Olson?
Uh, as well, yes, with regret.
I only have the word yes. Motion passes.
Well, I think it's worth noting in the minutes that the that the board has concerns about the language of the ordinance, given this application.
I understand.
Yeah.
Because that would give us, that would give us backup in the future, should there ever be any kind of dispute.
It should be the grouping as a whole.
Is this a formal referral? Is this a formal referral that like the chair writes to the trustees or what happens next?
I know that the liaison is watching because she watches almost every meeting. So it would not be inappropriate for Dan to call her and say, we trust, that's the trustees to take care of this.
Okay.
Yes, and she's watching.
Thank you, Lily.
No, since I have a list of code changes, I will make a note and make sure it gets put on it.
Thank you.
What would make sense if you have a building that has a possibility of multiples is to look at that saying, say there were three options in a building, the building is only 30 feet wide, each one could have ten of them.
Right, and the way that we did that recently was on Shane Place with Nukem Properties, where there was another business and we approved multiple, a grouping of signs with multiple businesses on it as one. But when we approved the Hartley Monroe almost a year ago, late summer last year, it was the only sign.
You don't, by the way, you don't have to stay for this part of the conversation.
Yeah. Best of luck, best of luck. Thank you. So I'll, I'll be glad to write a formal letter and ask them about.
Just call trustee Lampier and say, you know, my liaison.
Yeah.
Do we have applicants for the other?
They are, I mean, the demand is just merely changing pictures.
Yes.
Wait, hang on, we got to do, let's do minutes, let's do minutes for this one.
Findings of fact.
Excuse me, findings of fact, thank you. Uh, findings of fact are that the sign as presented, um, that 21 square feet meets village code as read.
Existing village code. As interpreted by the, excuse me, as interpreted by the village attorney. So by the code enforcement official. So by the code enforcement official and reinforced by the Village Attorney.
As stated in one sixty-eight dash seven B two A. Okay, eighteen State Street, lamps.
I'll be entirely replacing the existing fixtures. Here's a.
So it's just an in-kind replacement? Just an in-kind.
They're a little different.
It's hard to tell if they're the same size?
Yeah, they are roughly the same size.
Okay, I don't, I have no problem with this.
My, my only question was in the picture, it showed two, is this just how you change the light bulb with the bottom removed? Or is this one or the other that they're going to be going with? Because I would approve the one with the bottom on it, rather than the no bottom if it's going to be hung in this orientation.
I'm worried about.
Okay.
Look at, look at what's there though.
Yeah, but this looks like it fell off because there's older pictures.
But here.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Right, but then they, they show this one too.
Okay, but which one, which one of these two are you saying you would approve and not approve the other?
Uh, this top right image would be approved, but the bottom one would not.
Okay.
To replace the front. And my question was, why are they showing it in that? Because there's different mounting orientations.
Who knows?
There's different bottom.
Maybe that's why it came printed off, they couldn't just print it out.
I'll make a motion. This comes from the manufacturer, this piece of paper.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but what my question is, is you have a mounting on the bottom right, you have a mounting on the top right, okay? And then between the other differences, you also have a bottom design and a no bottom design.
Right.
So they're in this one image, the outdoor lantern, twin pack, part number I O L seventy-three T O R B, you have three different images. And what I want to know is which one they're going to be putting on the front of this building to match in best-case scenario what they have presented on the next page.
Well, we hear the mounting is downlight, uplight, or open downlight. And what you're saying is you do not approve the open downlight.
My, my question is, what, what are they presenting and what do they want?
Just specify, you know, what we're designing.
Yeah, just specify, you don't like that one.
Because if you look at the picture from two thousand four, both have the downlighting covered and have an ornate drop to it.
Do you have a preference on whether or not the mounting bracket is at the top of the lamp or the bottom of the lamp?
Even in the next picture, you can also see both of them. And, and then in the pictures, why they're replacing it, it looks like one is broken off.
Okay, but what?
Right here.
I'm, I'm looking at, this can be, this is mounted at the top.
Yep.
This is mounted at the bottom.
Right.
Do you have a preference?
Well, we should, we should state that as well too.
Because I think we're going to say what we want and if they don't like it, they can come back and discuss it.
Yeah.
Because they've liked it to Steve.
The currents are bottom.
Bottom mounted.
That's specified, they, they need to be mounted bottom mounted.
Especially this one right here, that's a good.
Bottom mounted with a drop at the bottom and a finial at the top. This is from my first, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with a selection made by the H P B of the image shown. The lamp is mounted at the bo, at the bottom with a drop and there is a finial at the top. The larger of the three images is shown in the application.
I'll second that motion or wait to be voted on?
No, you are the second.
Okay.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There is no need for a final application.
Let's do findings of facts on Candyland National Bank. Existing fixtures clearly deteriorating, they need to be replaced. They're being replaced as close to in-time as the applicant can find. The mounting, as well as the design, matches the existing fixtures. And before we move on to the last one, I do have a question for Steve. Can we talk about lighting in the village? As, as far as brightness goes, because with the development of the, I know it says seventy-five watts in there, but is that the max in the, in the village? What is the actual brightness?
That's, that's planning board check.
Planning board? Is, is brightness of the bulbs?
Well, if you have, if you have a code, if you have an issue with brightness on certain place, email me, I will take a look there. Our ordinance says for regular fixtures I'm owing to hand for exterior fixtures of street lights.
Okay. Just as someone who lives in, very, very close to the business district, the new LED lights are, they put off an incredible amount of flooding, unlike incandescent. ESL, they changed the hue, but the flooding is still there. It's not as bad as it originally was. It originally looked like.
They went back to the original models. What was there, then it's been there, they went, I, I made them change back before they touched.
And I appreciate that, that was a really big improvement. It was. But there's just been other ones and I'll let you know, I just wanted to talk about.
Yeah, you know, they got to be careful, the bank is a little more leeway.
Of course, for the ATM, yeah.
And parking lot.
And the parking lot, yeah. No, I understand. Okay, that's good. All right, so let's go to the last one. Ninety-eight and one hundred South Street. Doesn't look like they're here.
They're removing vinyl windows and replacing them with vinyl. I don't know if we want to get into.
The sizing is, is different.
Well, the, yeah, the sizing is different, but, but in my opinion, it's a more pleasing design.
Absolutely.
To have, to have, to impose, to change the size of the windows.
Virginia, if they're not here, I don't even know if they're following this.
Thank you.
Can you pass that packet to me in case they come next meeting?
We might want to table this.
Um, I think I have notes in mind, Virginia.
Well, I didn't ask you to.
Um, that's okay, I have, I have more copies. If you could bring yours back, if you want. Dave's in for you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Second. Totally agree with you, Jim, again. It's best improvement.
Member Torres?
Oh, yes. I, every single window that has a difference. Yes, it would be nice to have a little.
Yes.
More cohesive.
All right, and then there's no member items? No minutes?
Oh, and then it's for your next, next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so S T R work, I kept you very busy.
Also with Chris and Jeff out, I'm sure we would need help with those minutes as well, so.
I just wanted to put a reminder on the record that if you're participating in the group training, that September is the cutoff, rest of the year four hours. Or if you want to do any more training, please let me know.
I know that the mayor has stated that some board members feel they are above getting trained, and I will state to this board, as I stated in writing to the trustees, that I have federal certification in architecture and historic architecture that's based on years of professional practice. I am a trainer, not a trainee. I have made multiple offers to provide training for this board to the mayor who has rejected that offer. And I would like this to be part of the minutes, that I'm not being abstinent, but I am in fact more knowledgeable than the ordinary preservation board member. I've written preservation guidelines, so unless the mayor is willing to take me up on my offer to provide training, I will not be getting training. I'm happy to give training. I will not spend my time.
I understand.
Getting, when I could be the trainer, I have a desire to sit in the room.
So, Virginia, I think that it's best that I just say thank you for all that you do provide to the board and you're a very vital part to this board. And if you have a few extra hours, just do some training and if they mark it down as preservation training and then we can move on from it. But if you don't want to, that's.
I'll be happy to train my dogs that they don't come here.
I'll train us too, yeah. We'll set something.
As a bear, what do you have to say? As a bear dog, okay.
But no, I understand, we understand. All right, I'll make a motion.
Bark and vinyl siding. My children could point out vinyl siding driving down the street.
A second, do you want, Jim?
Second.
Thank you. Member Torres?
Yes. I will send a private offer to board members to train.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.